I'll call the regular meeting of the city council on September 3rd, 2014 to order. Uh, Rick, will you lead us in that pledge?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda, approval of minutes of the regular council meeting, August 20th, 2014.
We do approve.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Question's been called for for the motion of the approval of the minutes for the regular council meeting on August 20th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, unanimous. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the special council meeting dated August 22nd. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, uh, discussion? Question's been called for approval of the minutes of their special council meeting dated August 22nd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, unanimous. I have nothing under petitions and communications, it doesn't apply directly to something else that's on the agenda. And again, I'm saving all the fun stuff for next meeting with budgets and that, so we don't have anything really under the mares except for citizens' requests. So I'll let you take a couple of minutes with them over. But the citizens have requested us to do it in the city.
Did catch any response?
Oh, I think he's attempting to. Some of them are getting pretty smart. Yes, dunks and rabbits are...
Yes, they're digging.
Oh, beaver too? Okay, we'll go on. Next item on the agenda is attorneys, James Dolan, city attorney. Okay, anything to say?
Briefly, we had quite a busy Labor Day in terms of various misdemeanor citations. I was awakened in the early morning hours, the 31st of August, at a house party on East Bannack. And I believe seventeen minor possession of alcohol citations were issued at that party. On September 1st, there were eight issued at a house party on Thompson Street. Collectively, I think we've had about thirty-six or thirty-eight MIPs. And at last count, there were twenty guilty pleas entered into city court through some of those citations. I don't have a broken record as to which, but I think in terms of preventing that type of behavior in the city, it was a fairly fruitful review. We do have the review of the YSCA easement that's coming up. I think we'll try to put that on a, on an agenda for a forthcoming meeting, maybe the 17th of September, I don't know.
It will be.
All right, there. And then I know that we're also looking at a review of the open container ordinance. I know we kind of started that process earlier this summer. I think Chief Kraft and I have discussed that a little bit today about trying to get that, get that going again. Other than that, I have nothing further to.
Any questions, all? Okay, next one is the planning board. You had a meeting.
Yeah, we did meet and we had minutes next, uh, that we briefly discussed updates on growth policy and coordinating things with the ministry group. So we're all being consistent in heading certain same goal.
Okay, thank you. Next one, zoning commission?
We've got a meeting scheduled in a couple of weeks, week after next.
Okay. Uh, JS? I let him have some vacation today. He wanted to go combining, so it relieves the pressure. But I did get the information on their, on the beaver price subdivision, on the status of that. They've got DEQ approval, and so they're sort of waiting right now for the ditch to dry up. They're probably getting close to ready to start doing the pipe or the ditch. You know, you get that very, and that. Then after that, maybe by then, next meeting, JS will have a little more detail. But that's where they're at, so. They did get approval, and the engineer is working to get most likely that ditch is what we're told to get done now, first thing, so. Uh, next items, police chief Paul Kraft.
I'm going to just a little bit further expound on our Labor Day festivities. There's some thank yous that I'd like to put out there first of all, to those that attended the festivities downtown and the concert and rodeo. They were fairly good people. We didn't have very many problems as compared to the last year or years prior. We did have the following. We had only one DUI citywide, and I will contribute that to the campaign by the DUI task force, the presence of the Montana Highway Patrol impaired driving assessment vehicle, and safe rides and those kind of things, a cowboy taxi, ways to get rides home from the festivities. Like I said, we made fifty-two stops, traffic stops over the weekend, so we were, we were hitting it pretty hard and looking pretty close. We had one citation for suspended driver's license. We had one theft arrest, one disorderly conduct, and these are all over eighteen, by the way. Two expired registrations, as Mr. Dolan said. We had thirty-six MIPs, most of them culminating from the two house parties that we had. Two endangering the welfare of minors that came out of those parties. One failed to disperse, excuse me, eleven disorderly conduct, and one speeding ticket. Juvenile violations, and that's under eighteen. We had five disorderlies, two MIPs, one resisting, one obstructing, and two curfew violations. Another point that, another problem that we usually have year to year is the Argenna Street issue with the speed limit being lower there in Paterson. We had lots of calls from the residents wanting us to slow down traffic, and we just don't have the manpower. JS and I got together and with the help of the state highway department, we got a highway billboard down there that slowed traffic considerably. We did spend some time down there. You could see it come around the corner at about eighteen to nineteen miles an hour, and they'd sit there and drop like fifteen. So we didn't have any problems down there whatsoever. It was a fairly good evening. I don't should put in a lot of time and make them in there. Any questions on the Labor Day thing?
Okay?
Thank you.
Chief, my next item. We're not done yet. Okay.
I did notice some issues with some street closure stuff downtown. The mayor did call about some littering and stuff, some parking issues that was inside of the street closures. Just some abuses that I saw that I believe need to be at least talked about, if not just committing and redoing our special events application. That was done three years ago, and you know, a lot of that stuff was taken out of my hands and put in the council's hands. And I believe that we can, we can revamp that and do a little better job with it, so as not to affect other businesses downtown by one's closures. I think it just needs to be reviewed and some, some different policies and procedures set so that everybody is on the same page and, you know, we've got it on paper in black and white, and we know what we're up against and what we're going to do. So I would submit that for review.
Paul, that was already referred to judiciary to do a further review on the form that's only got about a year ago, so now we know what problems. And so we'll be scheduled meeting, all of us know, so we can bring that up to what we need.
Okay, I did spend a lot of time over the weekend with the tablet in my hand reviewing some of the problems that I saw and seeing some recommendations to the judiciary committee when we meet on that, so I'll be very well prepared for that meeting.
Yeah, we'll let you know in the next couple of weeks, we'll get scheduled.
Perfect.
She took her.
She got it?
Okay, any other?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, next item, fire marshal Rick Layer.
I'll report.
I'll report. Any questions, all? Come on in. Next item on the agenda is Judge Shay Erwin's report. Approval's approval?
Second.
It's been moved second, discussion on it?
Call for question.
The question's been called for on the approval of the judge's report for July 2014. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Now, to inform people, I'll put the, the official letter in next packet, I was just told to date, so I'll put it in the next one. Judge Shay, Shay Erwin, she's resigned effective October thirty...
Can't block this dirty.
Thirty-first, I think, thirty or thirty-first. Can't remember, but it'll be in the packet. So she said she gave us two months about so we can advertise and find a replacement for her. What it is, is the husband has left, not, didn't go into law detail, he's got another job up north somewhere. Is it Kalispell area? Okay, so it's official that she's going up there, so we got about two months to find a replacement for her. So you'll see the letter will be in the packet, and after I put the letter in, then I'll advertise for about a month, how's that? And then I'll bring the applicants to the table on the, probably the second meeting of October. Or we can wait, I'm not sure, maybe we should talk. I'm not sure if we can really vote to replace her then while she's still here, so maybe it'll be the first meeting, we'll go a couple of days without a judge. But, I mean, we'll work out the details, but I just wanted to inform you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report, Mr. Strauss.
Uh, we have a total amount of cash and investments of eight point nine million dollars at the end of July, of which four hundred and forty-four thousand was committed towards getting the warrants that were approved. I'm attempting to keep as much as possible invested, and I've determined that we do not need separate investment accounts for various funds, so I have started the process to, to transfer funds and close out excess bank accounts and investment accounts. So our cash today has been commingled across all funds, and we're going to do the same thing with the investments, so that it would just be less administration and easier to manage. So a number of accounts of stock and bank funds, this will probably be cut from ten down to two. And keeping with that, I have an investment report that's work in process, it's a second, it's one piece of paper, and I'm in the process of renaming accounts and making it clearer so that if you look at the first line that says cash Wells Fargo Bank, that represents the actual cash in the bank in Wells Fargo as of, as of the end of July. And if you look down a little bit further, you see investments, Stockman Bank, six million and eight sixty-two, that's the total of all the, our investments in Stockman Bank, and tied to the bank statements. There are a lot of accounts that you'll see here listed, and they're for various purposes, and they're seen here as a memo recording item. The offset to those is the second line on that cash report, the memo account, the cash reporting offset. So if you look, for instance, at the, at one oh one zero six, cash, common bearing, unification, two hundred and ninety-five dollars, for some reason that's been designated for that purpose, and that's the balance, and it's offset by the credit in the memo recording account. That cash really doesn't, is, is not in a separate bank account that's in Wells Fargo. So this, I'll clean up, further clean up the, the titles, but you'll be able to see exactly where our money is invested and which money has been designated for various reasons.
And the reason he's doing this is so when we do bank reconciliation, it's a lot easier instead of having just one big bunch of money that you gotta wade through. Now he's gonna have a bunch of different accounts that each one will have a bank statement from, and so it makes it a lot easier and a lot less time consuming to do, you know, that's one. Plus, under the investments, even though he's grouping them all together, he's keeping track of all the monies that's grouped, so when you earn the interest off it, those will go into the equivalent funds that put the money in. So he's keeping track of all that still. David, you have a question?
First thing, I want to do a motion to, to accept the cash reconciliation report, investment report, spring July.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion? More discussion on it?
Call for question.
Question's been called for to approve both the cash reconciliation report for July and the investment report. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay?
And I guess I have one question. The reason the accounts were separated was that the FDIC at one time couldn't cover large amounts, so are we keeping them under, or have we checked into that, or?
Uh, our current requirements are, the FDIC insurance changed January 1st, and we are covered under FDIC insurance for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as part of our stewardship, we also have these accounts collateralized. So any, so the large accounts are collateralized, which means that we get a regular report from Pioneer Federal, from State Bank, from Stockman Bank, from Wells Fargo, where they have pledged other securities as insurance, if you will, against our balances exceeding two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And those amounts, with the exception of Wells Fargo, are a hundred percent. In the case of Wells Fargo, it's fifty percent, and they, and the previous mayor signed an agreement allowing Wells Fargo to go to the fifty percent level because they meet the capitalization requirements. In excess of six percent of their, of their assets are covered by their capital, and so the previous mayor agreed to a reduction from a hundred percent coverage to fifty percent coverage of the amounts kept in Wells Fargo.
Any other questions? Thank you, Neil. Next item on the agenda is library board minutes. Uh, Dan, you shared the.
Before you were the minutes from May eighth, twenty-eighth, June twenty-fifth, and July twenty-third, and I apologize for the inconvenience, but we've got some complications getting into this, ask for your approval.
Move approval of the minutes from May twenty-eighth to twenty-fifth, July twenty-third?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? Call for a question? Question's been called for to approve the library board minutes of May twenty-eighth, June twenty-fifth, and July twenty-third, 2014 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Is unanimous? Also in there, there is a public survey, that's not really a vote, but it's, I'll let Dan explain more, sorry.
It's, it's just a question here to, to help the library to better serve the community, and also on how we are, how the library is doing. So we're, and everybody can sign or fill these out. There's some out here, you can get some of these at the library, and they would appreciate if people would get them and fill them out, and so that we can see where we're at, what we need to improve on, and what we continue with what programs we have. Appreciate it.
Here's an extra one.
There's some here on the S, here you can sizzle.
Okay? Any other questions, all?
Just in the minute stand that there's concern on the board, that there's disparity between salaries, between the, the library employees and other city employees, is the board moving forward to close that disparity?
Yeah, we're, we're still working on that. They are gonna get a raise, and there's, one employee was promised a certain amount every year, and we're gonna try to get up there to that amount, plus the two percent raise, that we're still working on. We're gonna have to move some funding in some of the other categories, we don't take out. And I realize that salaries are established by the board of trustees, but if there's agreements, it falls on the city.
Right.
That's my concern.
And then I go to all of them, and they're working on it.
Okay.
They are. So, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. Next one is the tree board, JS isn't here, and I don't think they've had any meetings to report on, so we'll go on. To report to standing committees of the city council. First one, judiciary committee, Ms. Wester.
Before you have the minutes of the August eighteenth meeting, judiciary committee in regard to the nondiscrimination LGBT ordinance, so I put it to your approval for the minutes and to decide by motion of the action that the city council wants to take on the ordinance.
Will you approve approval of the minutes?
Second.
Okay, and it's been moved and seconded, discussion on the minutes?
Call for question.
Question's been called for, for the August eighteenth minutes of the judiciary committee approval. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes have been approved. As you want. Now what we can do is we can open it up right now to the public to speak if they want. I would ask on this, since it's a hot item, what, if you would, don't get personal, don't use cuss words, and let's try to limit it with this many people, let's try to limit it to three minutes apiece with this many people here. And so we'll let it open right now just for statements concerned. Now, if anybody wants to speak, go up to the front and state your name and address.
Well, good evening, John Cummings, and I'm from Butte, Montana, and is Jamie Olson?
I'm right here.
Jamie, I dropped Jamie a little letter this morning, and so thank you so much for distributing that. Thank you all for all of your service to the community, the wonderful to have me dedicated to just making Dillon and Montana a better place. It's a great thing to see. We, my wife Helen and I and Donald, as we came down from Butte, were members of People Like Butte, which is parent families and friends of lesbians and gays. Our son is gay, he came out in 2004, and it was really a blessing. It has brought our whole family much closer together. We have three girls and a boy, and it's just been a tremendous experience since that day. I would like to, and I told you it wasn't that, that the shock, and something that we had to adjust to.
I don't care.
But we decided that it was the best thing we could do, and we could welcome unconditionally, we just move forward from there. And so a few years ago, we started People Like Butte, and it's been just a great experience for us, and it has made us understand a lot about the thing called unconditional love. Unconditional love, I think, is something that is such a treasure to us, and anybody in the family knows that. It, it prevents suicides, it allows people to grow to their full potential, it makes the world a more productive and peaceful place, it reduces substance abuse, it creates acceptance, and allows people to pursue happiness, just like our forefathers demanded in the Declaration of Independence for each of us. God created each of us just as we are, including heterosexual people, homosexual people, transgender people, and queer people, and none of us choose our sexuality. I know I certainly didn't. So it, over the, over the years, as Helen and I, my wife, have come to be political activists, which is something I certainly been set up to be, and I, I grew up and worked for Montana Power for twenty-five years, and Northwestern Energy, and PPL, but as we, as we work in political activism, we'll realize something that is so valuable, and I don't know what a lot of people think of it this way. I treasure my freedom, you guys treasure your freedom, we all treasure our freedom. It's a great thing to have. The other side of that coin is responsibility. I have the responsibility to look out for your freedom, and I hope you have the responsibility to look out for my freedom. So those are, that's a very subtle point, but what we find in a lot of political activism kind of things is that some people think they have the freedom to oppress other people, and you know, that's not the way I see it. I see it, freedom I have and enjoy, and responsibility to protect that for other people. So I think that's an important point. If you do the math roughly, they say ten percent of people are lesbian or gay, two percent are transgender, you know, total, Beaverton County's got about nine thousand people, so maybe a thousand people is who we're talking about. Those are the thousand people in Beaverton County, they're more susceptible to suicide, rejection by their family and church, bullying, violence, and discrimination. I'm, I'm worried that many of our brightest people are leaving Montana. Our son can't live here. They find someplace else to live. One of the commissioners in Bozeman said, "A month ago, I didn't think we needed a nondiscrimination ordinance, but after listening to the opponents, I'm sure we do." nondiscrimination ordinance, but after listening to the opponents, I'm sure we do." The nondiscrimination ordinance passed without nothing in Bozeman. But I think one thing that we can do is we can accept LGBTQ people. Because as Montanans, we know how to accept things that we don't necessarily understand. I don't understand a lot about geology and forestry and agriculture. I don't understand a lot about all the different peoples that make up Montana. But I've accepted that I don't understand that. There's a lot of duty in that. And, and it makes me better because I know that I accept things that I don't understand. So in closing, please bring this issue to the table. Let the public discuss it. It's something that I think will really help your town. And you'll proclaim to the world that I'm gonna look out for my neighbor. There was a lady, Alice Walker, who, the author of The Color Purple. The most common way people give up their power is by thinking they don't have it. So I would encourage you to use the power you have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any others wanna speak?
Good evening. I've spoken here before. My name's Dale Stewart. I live at 711 Sunset West here in Dillon. So I know this has been a contentious issue, I guess, but I've been to the judiciary meetings and this meeting, everybody's handled it quite well and there hasn't been any, any rough feelings, I guess. So I would just, I'd like to say a couple of things in regard to this gentleman. I think his information is a little inaccurate according to the, on one point in particular, according to the Census Bureau, the latest census, it says that .003% of Beaverhead County claims to be gay or lesbian. So that would drop that 1,000 person down to about three people in the county. And nationwide, again, according to the Census Bureau, it's only about 4.3 to, at the highest of any level that attributes to being gay or lesbian in the United States. So again, I checked those facts that were presented earlier. Again, you know, I brought this up before and I brought it up to the judiciary committee and they've looked at this information and I think they've made a good recommendation that there has not been any discrimination here in Beaverhead County to the gay and lesbian folks and the transgender folks. And so I checked with the college, they affirmed that, which is probably our most diverse culture in Beaverhead County. And so there's really, you know what the judiciary committee had come up with, an overwhelming support that this type of ordinance is not needed because their act is not any discrimination taking place. You know, words, words have power and I've heard this from a few people that people on, maybe that agree with me on this side of the issue, disagree with the lifestyle of a homosexual or transgender. And I think we're being falsely accused that saying because we disagree with an issue, it automatically says that we are discriminating. And so disagreement does not equal discrimination. And, and this issue isn't really before you, isn't really whether we agree with the lifestyle of a homosexual and transgender person or not. It's a matter of is this a good law for Dillon to adopt? And I think with the recommendation from our attorney, he's checked into it. And this goes beyond the authority of Dillon to even accept an ordinance like this because of the way that our, our council and our city is set up. And so I would just encourage the full council to take the recommendation of the judiciary committee and not adopt this because it does overreach our, our authority as a city. And it's an ordinance that really isn't needed at this time. So I thank all of you again for your service and for listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Donna Revis. I'm here from Butte. Just drove over here with John here and his wife Helen. You know, I'd just like to say that, to me, it doesn't really matter how many gay or lesbian people live in this county. You know, I have cerebral palsy. I don't know how many people with cerebral palsy live here. But I'd like to think that even if one person lived here, you would wanna have legal protection for that person. And if there's no discrimination going on, there's nothing to worry about. You know, there really isn't. That's pretty much all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any others didn't wanna speak?
Guys are being bombarded with Butte people. My name's Richard Wagner. I worked for 17 years.
Are you from there, sir?
Yes, yes. And I worked for 17 years as a crisis response therapist and Dillon was part of my area. And I just wanted to say that, that I agree with the last lady, that numbers are really sort of making, you know, not all that important how many gay people you have. I don't have to tell any of you that the issues of depression and suicide are relevant here, just like everywhere else. Nationwide, teenagers who are gay are four times more likely to commit suicide as people that aren't. I happen to be a gay man. My partner's over there. We've been together for 26 years, but I'm not here to speak about us. We're obviously from a different commie and stuff, but, you know, you've got kids in your charge. Some of them may be gay. And if you can do something like this to make life a little bit more normal so that, you know, maybe they can reach you to their adult ears, you know, I don't think it can hurt. And so I appreciate your consideration of this matter.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Richard Turner, 335 South Dakota, Dillon. I really wasn't prepared to say anything tonight since my name has been all over the daily paper, weekly paper with my opinions explained rather in full. But I think I do wanna say that this concern for the psychological health of gay youngsters especially does pertain to an ordinance because a city sets the tone through its legislation. And if our city is going to say that homosexuals are second-class citizens and it's okay to fire them from their place of employment, it's okay to, to evict them from their apartments if they're gay, it's okay to deny them access to your business. If we make these announcements about our feelings about this minority group, that filters down into Beaverhead High School and becomes translated into less than fully masculine boys being slammed up against lockers. It leads to them being called queer, gay, fairy. It leads to all sorts of consequences that you may not have a direct role in creating, but it has a way of being related. I do have a question, though. We haven't actually discussed on the council, the underlying issue of prejudice. I wanna know if members of this council think it's okay, and it's okay under state law, but should it be okay under Dillon law for someone to be evicted from his apartment because his landlord discovers he's gay? I'd like, I'd like a yes or no answer on that for me. Similarly, is it okay for a guy working in a business to be fired when his boss discovers he's gay? Is that okay with you? It's okay with the state legislature, but why should that be okay here? It's not okay in Butte now, or Bozeman, or Helena, or Missoula. Why should it be okay here? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Helen Cummings from 1828 Whitman Avenue, Butte. So I have four children, one gay and three heterosexual, straight. And I just would like to talk about lifestyle. My children that are straight didn't decide to be straight. My son didn't decide to be gay. But about their lifestyle, my son is a, got his black belt karate. He's an Eagle Scout. He's a lawyer. He's a prosecuting attorney and puts bad guys in jail. He spends many, many hours of his own time and money to serve those that are less fortunate in his community. I am, could not be prouder of the lifestyle that he has chosen. One thing that John Mike did have, and John said it too, and my Katie, and my Mandy, and my Abby, is they had the love of their parents. They had the acceptance of their family. And now even the acceptance of the community that he grew up in. People, these young kids who are gay, they say, "My gosh, since we did this in Butte, it has changed the tone. I am so, I feel, I feel liberated. I feel now that I count two." The game that the kids played on the playground where my kids went to grade school was called Smear the Queer. That is not acceptable. That is not acceptable. There's one other thing, and we're talking about these other communities in Montana that are deciding to, to pass this NDO, this nondiscrimination ordinance. It might be good to remember that 90 of the top 100 Fortune 500 companies have NDO ordinances like this. And they want to go to communities and places and grow their business and do people who will accept and support all the people that work for them, not just those that are like them. When I grew up, my mom said, "You love your neighbor as yourself, not because they are just like you." She said, "You know, when we grew up, a gal that, they were gonna build a new church. It wasn't our church, but she needed to go worship at the church that was right for her. So we gave her money and we helped build her church so she could go and worship how she wanted." That, to me, speaks volumes that, okay, we can support and love and help each other even if we're different. And thank you so much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any others?
I'm Sukie, but I live on Buffalo Drive. I feel that when we live in community, it's an inherent fact that we respect one another. It doesn't matter how we live, if we live in a way that is respectful to others, thoughtful of others. When we start passing laws to make us behave in a particular way, it doesn't benefit us. It divides, it causes distress. And we should be inclusive and respectful for one another. I just feel that this would not be beneficial. It's not going to change how people behave towards other people. That's a matter of your heart. And I think living in Dillon, we have shown respect for one another. Sometimes I get my feelings hurt. Sometimes somebody steps on my toes, but it doesn't mean I have to have a law or an ordinance to have somebody else respect me. I guess that's, you understand where I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
I'm Gary Stone, and I too am from Butte. And I am the father of three children. I'm a gay man. I have a gay daughter. They live, they, all my kids live in Texas. I've been accepted by my family. And my lifestyle is of, I'm just dad to all my kids and green daddy to all my grandkids. And this ordinance that we're talking about, that y'all are discussing, would simply provide acceptance for those who are different. I lived a man, a straight life for a lot of years because I was afraid to come out. Because I felt like that if I did, I would lose my job. If I did, I would be rejected by my parents. To my utter amazement, it didn't happen. And you'd pass this same ordinance, this guy didn't follow. It hasn't changed anything but made the more, the community more accepting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any others? Sir?
I'm Ken Schiavel. I live in 1117 Dustin Lane in Dillon. And I know this has come up in one of the previous meetings, and, and I am a landlord. I have not a huge number of rentals. Lynn used to rent from me years back. Good renter, I'm sorry to have lost her back then, but, but at any rate, I, like so many others, I really don't see a need for this. The last time I looked at the codes, which has been a while admittedly, but I'm sure they haven't changed, I think there's plenty of remedy in place to, would not allow someone to be kicked out on the basis of their homosexuality or transgender. That I just think would cause a great problem for a landlord to do that. He would be opening himself up without this to a major problem. So I just wanna say that. And, and I echo what this gal says or here too, is that, you know, I personally know several gays. I've not had any problem, ever had a bad conversation with them. None of them rented from me, but that's besides the point because it was, that was not a context. But I personally have never seen any real problem in Dillon. And I think for you to pass this as a, as a gesture and perhaps opening up the city to possible legal ramifications seems like the wrong avenue to choose. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Sharon Wilson. I live on Beaverhead Lane. I guess I'm speaking from a teacher's point of view. And when people say I've never seen a problem, perhaps you haven't, but I'd be surprised if they aren't here. Because as a teacher, I know there were things on the playground we missed often. And bullying and teasing children goes on, as I'm sure it does in the adult world. I speak somewhat from experience because I have several cousins who I don't think chose the life that they live now. Because it was hard growing up to admit that you perhaps didn't have the same feelings towards people that others might, that was accepted. But I always felt with those cousins, something very special. They're very, I don't think I've met a single gay or lesbian person that I wouldn't want to not have as a friend. They have the biggest hearts for whatever reason. And the thought that maybe we don't see it happening in Dillon, I think we're sticking our heads in a hole and denying that there are things going on. I think what harm would it come in saying it's a welcome community, rather than throwing a log that doesn't quite clarify it? It's kind of a gray area. And I think we have a chance to make it a very clear area. Because we know, all of us that are sitting here, it's not something that's easy for people to come out. It's only in the last few years that people have come out. Because there has been a lot of discrimination against them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I've already spoken once, is it?
Well, council wanna do one more?
Sure.
Okay, if you can come up and respond.
I wanna clarify something. This ordinance is not about respect. If you're a gay person, I don't think you care so much about whether someone respects you or not. You care about whether you're safe in your place of employment, if you follow all the rules and do a good job. You ought to be safe in your housing. You don't wanna be uprooted because someone finds out you're gay. It's not a matter of respect. It's, that's, I think that's an interesting conversation, but it's not what this ordinance is about. This is about protecting the This is about protecting the civil rights of a minority population, which, thanks to the state legislature, are not being protected currently. We do have the authority, as a self-governing city, to pass this ordinance. It's only in this city that the issue has been raised with the matter of authority. In 2011, the state legislature tried to pass a bill that would have stripped cities of the right to make an ordinance such as this. They had in mind Missoula. It failed. They tried to strip this authority away, but it failed. You do have the authority, you can do it if you have the will to do it. If you don't have the will to do it, you can use this authority question as an excuse not to do what you know in your hearts is right.
Thank you. Does the council want to do something?
I would move to approve the Judiciary Committee's recommendation.
To not, to not do an ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, that's the motion.
Can you do a negative motion?
You gotta do it in a positive.
You gotta do it in a positive.
All right, I would change my motion to approve it. The, the, to not, to, to go, to, that the council goes forward with an NDO ordinance.
Or have the city attorney write, start writing with the Judicial Committee of the NDO ordinance? Is that what you're saying?
We would just approve it here tonight, and then be up to the city attorney to play catch-up, I guess, and write the ordinance.
So we're approving an ordinance before we have an ordinance written?
No, we're approving the process to go forward with an ordinance.
Okay, so we're just going forward with one, just right. Okay. Motion on the table, is there a second?
Repeat the motion.
I have it, it's a motion on the table to start the process to generate an NDO ordinance. Correct, Amike?
I'll second that.
Good move and seconded, discussion?
I guess I want to say something. You know, I've been here probably ninety-nine point nine percent of my life, and we like to think that there is a discrimination out there. There is against race, color, origin, religion. I've heard it all here in Dillon. I've had some people come to me that prefer to remain anonymous because of their sexual preference, and I asked them. And yes, there has been some discrimination within the city of Dillon. But, you know, they're not willing to come forward, because Dillon is a community that's still adjusting to accepting the man and all of that. I feel that, you know, I'm against all kinds of discrimination, and I think this is just one of them. Any comment?
Call for the question. Question, can you call for it? To approve the process to start an NDO ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have to poll, and we'll start. David?
All right.
Mr., Ms. Wester?
No.
Mr. Gore?
No.
Mr. Trotec?
No.
Mr. Nadi?
No.
Mr. Archer?
No.
Mr. Shaden?
No.
Okay, the motion fails. Six to eight, or six to two, sorry. Okay, the issue is done.
I would like to ask, maybe the council, being as this motion failed, to consider a resolution against all types of discrimination within the city of Dillon. You know, it's not going to carry any weight, but at least it's a statement.
I think that's a noble gesture, but I, I think we probably have enough laws on books to cover discrimination across the country.
Could we make, could we make a resolution stating that we agree with the state laws and will follow the state laws as prescribed?
Yeah, I mean, that's a given. We don't take a vote to say that we're gonna follow state.
It's a given, but it's like trying to say.
Supposed to always follow state.
Yeah, it's a given, but, you know.
I suppose we can write another resolution.
Write that. There's, of course, a policy statement, and of course, I would, I would say that. Location clause in federal law.
I guess as a council, you know, it, this is a very personal matter, issue, and we would like people to know that, that in every effort, that no discrimination is done. Yes, we fail sometimes within a community, but we're trying our best, and I think that's what Dillon is. We're trying our best to accept the differences and respect each other and treat each other fairly. And that's all we're struggling for, to save. Maybe that's enough.
I would agree. I would like to think that Dillon has raised itself enough that there is none, although I am a realist and I understand there could be some, but I would hope that everybody do not discriminate. Now, can we, we can do a resolution if you want, to say we don't want discrimination to occur, with just a resolution. It's up to the council.
I think it would be advisable, you know, something out of what I'm thinking, like, what's in the employee handbook? The type of, you know.
You want the city attorney, we don't need a vote, just say, you want city attorney and I to try to generate a resolution, then say, talk about we don't want discrimination, and then bring it forth to the next meeting for you to see? You want to do that?
No harm in that.
Okay, we'll do that. I'll take it on, or haven't really asked him. So we'll take it on. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Thanks for everybody on the comments. The Finance Committee, Mr. Spear.
Uh, yes, before you, you have the Claims Report, the Line Item Budget Report, and the Summary for August of two thousand fourteen Claims. I ask for your approval.
So moved. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion? Call for the question. The question's been called for to approve the Claims Report for the month of August, the Line Item Budget Report for August, and Summary of August Claims. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Any other?
No.
Okay. Thank you, David. Uh, next item on the agenda, Health, Fire, and Order, Mr. Schaefer.
No report.
Okay. Uh, Cemetery Parts, Mr. Trotec?
No report.
Thank you. Uh, next one, Street Hally Committee, Mr. Archer.
No report.
Okay. Now, just to tell you, I spaced it out, better way of saying. I will have it on. I did get your email, and as I was going through, I've seen it that late that afternoon, but it's too late for the agenda. It will be on, it's in the packet, the one about the YMCA easement, so. Uh, next one, Water and Sewer Committee, Mr. Carter.
Yes, first off, I want to apologize to the city of Dillon. Because we made a mistake in our agenda. We did, well, not cutting everybody's water bill, twenty percent, because of two months. At our meeting, Gerald Jones has a water leak. He spoke out about the water leak in Kentucky Avenue. He's at his mother's house, and to repair the line, they have shut the water off at the ditch, and they cannot fix it till after everybody's done irrigating. The water will be shut off sometime in September. Councilman Arthur moved to recommend to the full council to reduce the water bill hugely by twenty percent until the month of July and August. Councilman Spear seconded, and the motion was approved, unanimous agreement. So I would like to have a motion, and I'll make the motion, that we reduce Gerald Jones' water bill.
We accept the minutes first.
Yeah, maybe.
Let's do the minutes first, then we'll be. We have to accept the minutes first.
Uh, I vote to accept the Water and Sewer Committee meeting's report.
Second.
Sorry, sweetie.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, accept the minutes. Discussion. Mr. Archer?
Yeah, I would like to make a correction. My motion was to recommend to the full council to reduce Mr. Jones's water bill for the month of July and August by twenty percent.
Okay, I got that correct. Uh, is there one to amend with corrections?
I thought it was water usage.
Yeah, water. Yeah, I'm sorry. Water usage.
Okay, do we have a motion with the amendment?
I'm going to motion with that amendment, Mr. Jones.
Okay, been moved and seconded, discussion? For the question?
Oh, for the question.
Oh, for the question, to accept the amendment of changing Mr. Jones for adding the Jones in there. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're going to the full motion with the amended, and I'll state that if everybody's ready. Okay, full motion is to accept the, uh, August twenty-fifth, I'm looking for the date, August twenty-fifth, committee minutes from the Water and Sewer Committee with the correct action of adding Mr. Jones's name under where the bill is. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, now that we can go to your recommendations.
So I recommend, I recommend, make a motion to recommend that we cut Gerald Jones's water bill hugely by twenty percent for the month of July and August.
We'll second that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, discussion?
Call for the question.
The question's been called for to reduce the water bill for the month of July and August for Mr. Jones's by twenty percent, just the water usage. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So second our amendment.
Councilman Trotec moved to recommend to the council to accept the task order number eight, and Councilman Arthur seconded. I would like to make a motion, and the city council accept the task order number eight.
No. No, not he. No, see, the motion failed.
Motion failed. Okay, well, I guess we don't vote. Well, what you agreed to on that one is it'll come back again with it redone some. Okay, given suggestions on what to do, it'll come back. Your recommendation was to bid and sell the Johnson property with the minimum amount required.
Okay, I'd like to recommend to the full council advertise to bid to sell the Johnson property with the minimum amount required.
Second. Been moved and seconded, discussion?
How is that minimum amount determined? By whom? Is that by, does that need to come back to the council for approval for a minimum amount? And who, who's, who does that recommendation come from?
Mr. Archer, you want to write an answer to it?
I, I think Mr. Turner and our mayor were going to look back in the records, determine how much we have invested in that property, and that would be our minimum, minimum acceptable bid.
Mr. Knight? Yes, that was correct.
What is the reason why we're getting rid of the property now?
Because they have to pay, it costs a lot of money to fix it up.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but, you know, next time the city decides to buy a piece of property, they should have it inspected before we purchase it.
That was done by the last administration.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying, from now on, I mean, even a bank, if you go to, most banks nowadays require an inspection, home inspection, before you buy the property. And I don't understand why this was not done prior to the purchase of the last time.
I think there was appraisal, wasn't there?
Well, appraisal is different from an inspection.
Yeah, I don't know why, I mean.
And I don't, that happened before my term, and I can't speak. So are we selling the whole property or just?
The whole property.
The building and?
And the land that's with it.
Yes.
Mr. Archer?
Yeah, and I'd just like to say, the Water and Sewer Committee went out with the adminis, city administration and looked at the building. The whole property's been all cleaned up, inside of the building's been cleaned up. And that was my understanding, one of, one of the reasons that the city bought that property was to get it cleaned up, and then look at options, what to do with it.
Well, I thought we were told when we go there to buy it, if they had plans, and put, moving some of the city's supplies for the water repair and sewer repair to that place.
And that was the plan, you know, but unfortunately, the building is not worth it. You know, we had, they had two plans. One was the cleanup, quote unquote, uh, put it in nice words, a junkyard on one side of town, and possibly load the water and sew it over there.
And that can still be done if the council don't want to sell it. I have it pretty much tore apart enough that when we can come in to do the repair, the minimums, we need to redo electricity, electricity's really unsafe. We gotta do a whole heating system, there really isn't one. I'd be afraid to turn it on. I'd put new one, we gotta get a new roof, it's leaking all over.
New insulation.
Some insulation, we gotta fix the front office completely up, that's in pretty bad shape, it's leaking.
It'd actually be better off if it was in building condition.
And the walls are starting to tip out.
The walls are starting to tip over, because they're bored it on a slab and breaking. So it's kind of, we can use it still, but.
That's my point exactly, next time we decide to purchase a piece of ground, we have to inspect it before.
If I could jump in, your point, Mr. Knight, is very well taken, and I can't speak to all of the decisions of the previous administration, but I know historically, I believe that the estate offered that property to the city, some type of a first refusal, I don't know, they, they chose to buy the property, it has been cleaned up. I myself, I think, went out there with Chief Craft some months ago, prior to this visit, and I think, you know, I myself could tell that this building was maybe perhaps not, not as in its best of shape as it may have been, but, again, yeah, inspections are important, no question about it, but I think this came from, from an option by estate to the city. And I, I do recall there was some talk about cleaning it up, though, Mr. Archer, too, in part of that transaction.
Now, do we also have two pieces of property for sale, or is the one over there by the Y still?
The one by the Y is.
That's all by the other corporation. There's another Johnson that we bought from, or we haven't bought from, that's.
Are you talking to Mike Johnson?
I thought, I thought the city had acquired a piece of ground, because we thought, they thought that they were gonna give the VA home there.
Oh, no, that's, that's paperhead development, economic development. Yeah, it's not the city's. Any other?
Peter Fletcher, South Dakota. Uh, I'm just, something that went through my mind after we were up there. The thing is, if you determine that you're going to put the minimum selling price at what you paid, is that going to take into account, was, was this not involved in the five or six years of legal action also?
No.
No?
It, it wasn't five, six years, it was, it was the same attorney, they had him go due, but it was nowhere near that. This was a year total and he didn't put a lot of time in.
From October on, wasn't it, somewhere?
Yeah, I mean, we will take that into account.
Yeah, right.
If I add up what he, what he charged us to do it, but we won't, it's not five years. But we will look what he charged us total and that would go into the sale price, or the minimum bid price, not the sale price, but the minimum bid. Along with, we had an environmental appraisal done. And I can't remember, it was like three thousand, somewhere in there. Can't remember the exact numbers, so don't go quoting. But so all that will go into the minimum bid, we don't want to have any loss on it.
That's what I was saying.
It was offered to us at a price that was very reasonable.
Yes, we paid one twenty.
Way below market value, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gore?
One thing I discussed with the previous mayor about that lot, it'd be a good investment for the city of Dillon and long-term. Steel buildings aren't too terribly expensive and they last forever. The one problem we got here with the city is all of our equipment and everything is so congested in this little tiny area. And talk about rotten, old, broken down buildings, which we have here. If we had that lot, fished it off and put up a new building, tear all this garbage out here, turn this into city parking for the city hall, we'd make two great investments for this town. And clean up two big messes and we'd have plenty of room out there for all of our equipment, trucks, everything, and a big lot where they can do maintenance or whatever they want. But just an option, I don't want to take it.
And I would like to have a building, because it is really congested all around in here.
Well, yeah, tear all this out, turn this into parking just for city hall.
We could, that's an option. There's numerous options, that's one, yes. And I think, I'm not speaking for the council, but it has been discussed that if this sells, we can take this money, whatever we get from it, and put it into another building. We have the lagoon area, just for example, of a possibility that down in the corner, if you go down by the Humane's, not Humane Society, the animal shelter. You go down by that and there's a big open area down there that we can put some base underneath and build a building there. That we own the land, we just gotta build a building. And we can take whatever we get from this sale, put into that building there. It's an option, another, and then we can move these people from here down to there.
Haven't we already made a motion and approved it to go forward with the sale of this?
Not yet, we're doing discussion right now. Motion's been made, yes, but we're in discussion still. And we're sort of waiting for a question when people are all done for discussing.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to advertise for bids and sell the Johnson property with a minimum required, amount required. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we'll poll, this time we'll start here, Mr. Schaefer, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Nye?
Aye.
Mr. Trotec?
Aye.
Mr. Gore?
No.
Ms. Westhead?
Aye.
Mr. Coddam?
Aye.
Mr. Spear?
Aye.
Okay, passes seven one. Thank you. Uh, that's it for the committees. Now, public comment on items of significant public interest, not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city. Anybody out there to, or Mr. Strauss?
I have, I have one item related to, that I'd like to recommend that the Water and Sewer Committee take up and consider. And that is, well, it's pretty related to two related items. One is that we have, occasionally have people that do not pay their water bills. And it's come to my attention that sometimes our costs associated with trying to collect these water bills, when we have to involve a city attorney and serving of papers and all that, the costs will far exceed the amount due. And so what I would like the, the Water and Sewer Committee to consider is allowing the administration here to employ a collection agency where our collection, our collection efforts have failed and, and further legal and other collection activities need to take place. It would be much more cost effective rather than spending several hours of city attorney's time and cost of legal service, trial, or whatever involved. We only have about a handful of these a year, if that many. And it would just simplify our process if we were, if and when we are unable to collect after two or three months, to turn the, the collection effort over to a collection agency.
Those are non-active accounts.
Correct. Then the.
How about that, would you take that? Would you take it? Water and Sewer Committee?
Yes.
Okay, and the, and a related item to that is that our, our current for residential water and sewer deposits are stated as one hundred dollars for renters and, and thirty-five dollars for owners to open up a water and sewer account. Those amounts were determined by the council in nineteen eighty-seven. And that's quite a few years ago, about twenty-seven years ago. And I believe the average water bill for a city resident is in the neighborhood of seventy to seventy-five dollars. And I would like you to review what is appropriate, which is related to the collection agency in that we would have a little bit more security if we were to raise our, our standard deposits against people who do skip. So.
Want to take that too? Okay. Any other comments from the public? Call for adjournment? Been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?